I'd like to open with a moment of silence and if we could keep in mind Dr. Noah Wilson, the father of our Commissioner Beth Wilson Foley, and Don Stumpf, our Superintendent of Elections, who is in the hospital. Let us have a moment of silence. This evening we have scouts from Troop 951 who are working on their communication badge and we've asked them if they would like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the right, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have the agenda before you. Is there any change, modification, or deletion from the general agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda at stand. Moved by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Pamela Baldwin. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Out to the consent agenda, we have four items which are listed here on the first page. Are there any additions or deletions? Or is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Jay Farrell. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. No one has signed up for Citizen Matters for speaking. Is there anybody that did not have an opportunity to sign up that would like to speak in accordance with our rules? Commissioner, update. I have not actually been to -- you know, the summer is one of those wonderful times when meetings have a tendency to be moved more into the fall and I have not attended anything since our last meeting. Have any members of the Board of Commissioners been at meetings they'd like to report on?
In reference to the Fairground Association, the Chatham County Fairground is now scheduled for Thursday, September 22nd through Sunday, September 25th. It opens on Thursday, September 22nd at 5:00 with opening ceremonies starting at 5:30 p.m. So I would like to invite all you all to attend and bring your little children so they can have a great time.
I did not attend the last PVA meeting. I was out of town. But Hillary Pace County gave them a presentation and I think -- so I asked for a hold of this to us and so this is my update of this document. I haven't had a presentation on it either, but thought it would be good if we could get a hold of it.
Thank you. And we have that -- it wasn't part of -- it was not part of our agenda package, but it's here on the table. Thank you.
I have one more item. Triangle J Council with Government meeting will be on Wednesday, this Wednesday, and I will be attending that. We had reached that for the summer, but we are about to begin again.
Any final change?
We have -- we did meet and nothing substantive to report in that meeting.
If there's nothing further as far as Commissioner updates, we'll go into public hearing if there's a motion to go into public hearing tonight. Moved by Beth Wilson Foley, seconded by Michael Fiocco, to go into public hearing to hear regarding 1345 Thompson Street rezoning from residential to C2. Victoria Vela is with us tonight. Thank you, Victoria.
The rezoning for REZ 2016-06, for the proposed rezoning of 1345 Thompson Street, the owner, Pat Cothran, currently has an insurance office located on this property and is proposing to change the property from RA to C2, which is highway commercial. The future land use map has designated this property for mixed use, which of course includes commercial uses. The adjacent properties are zoned RA and C2. And the staff finds that this proposed -- that the proposed district, C2, is consistent with the future land use plan and believes this to be a suitable location for the highway commercial. Staff recommends this case be sent to the planning board for recommendation.
Since no one has signed up to speak for this public hearing, is there anybody now who's just a call from here? Would you like to say anything before the board this evening? And that planning board meeting will be on September?
The 7th.
7th, okay. Is there a motion to go out of public hearing if there are no more comments to be made by members of the public? Moved by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Jay Farrell. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. That's to move out of public hearing. Excuse me. Under -- thank you, Victoria. Under Old Business, we have a report regarding the Chatham County Additional Elements Review Committee.
Mayor, I'll just briefly state Brian and I are here if you have any questions, but I think you all have all the information that you would need to proceed forward tonight. And again, we can make some questions.
On our desk was an amended resolution to appoint this committee, the Pittsboro Advisory Committee on Chatham Park Additional Element. And that revision has been made in order to sort of hone a bit Section 3 that talks about the responsibilities and focus of the committee. And I believe that, Paul, is what's been changed in narrowing the additional elements in 3B?
The name of the committee has been changed and also in paragraph 7, I had originally recommended that the committee address each element separately. I just have decided that perhaps that would be limiting factor in that if the board decides to have a schedule, then the committee ought to follow whatever schedule you adopt. But other than that, it's the same thing.
I am open for motions from the commissioners, but I sort of see it this way as far as moving towards a solution. First of all, we need to discern whether the members of this committee will be only residents of the town of Pittsboro, only residents of the town of Pittsboro, and the ETJ, or whether the committee could be drawn from a broader focus. Is there -- there was a small amount of discussion about that, but there was no decision made at the last meeting. Is there further discussion about that?
I personally don't feel that it should just all be Pittsboro residents because we'd be nothing out of a lot of expertise that would be involved to it. And I also feel that Chatham Park is going to impact the majority of the area, especially impact ETJ as well. I feel like we should all --
So the town and ETJ, but not the full county?
No, how good about that? Certainly the ETJ and the town.
Other than the town and the ETJ.
I'm both going to take considering the whole county because that would be impacted. But I don't have the curious to throw out the Commissioner's statement.
Well, I'd originally stated that it was appropriate to be limited and Commissioner Bottas and I have been talking a little bit about that idea. And when I do look at the folks that have put forth their names, I think there are several folks outside of the ETJ that actively work within committees in Pittsboro and are dedicating a lot of their time to the town already. And so, you know, I am willing to broaden the eligible field.
I think it's important they used to get qualified people that didn't really help out. And to me, it's not important as much where they're from, but obviously in the county. I feel like what they bring to the tables is important.
I think I'm counting 11 members of the committee that live outside the ETJ and the town limits, so that would make our roster more inclusive. Does anyone want to make a motion to that effect, or shall we just proceed with that as an understanding for our point of view?
I don't have any problem with the county. If I would be inclined to get people who have some real, you know, have some real knowledge about it and are able to advise us on different things, I don't have a problem with that.
And I think if we were to include this broader selection of folks, we'd probably do well to revise the resolution because it does say the Commissioners are interested in the opinions, input, and evidence and property owners within the town next to the territory of the position. So probably do well to revise that where as that's forward headed.
What about the number of members at the committee? There had been some discussion about each of us appointing two in previous times. There was also some discussion the other night about having an odd number and I think actually about the last board meeting, I think, having an odd number so as to keep from having impasse. The folks have a feeling about, I think, John, you would want a somewhat of a larger committee, is that --
Sure, yeah. When I first put pencil and paper on this and started thinking about it, as Commissioner Foley suggested, thinking about this in terms of the expertise that we would need, I just put some rough categories down and I think I shared with those with everyone last time, but things like, I expected that we would need at least two downtown business representatives. We would need two representatives of the ETJ, two representatives of the town at least. At least one adjacent property owner I had in mind, perhaps two persons knowledgeable of environment and conservation issues. I'd like to have two people on affordable housing. But anyway, I just kind of went through that list that way and I came up with 17, but the board, several members have expressed a preference for 12. I think there's a certain wisdom to having 13, an odd number, just in case the committee decides that they need to vote on something, then we'll avoid having a stalemate or an impasse. And I think that given the current list of applicants, as vague as our request or advertisement was, I'm really pleased that we got such a great turnout. But Commissioner Foley, again, and myself, we have discussed the current list and we think that there may be some categories, as I suggested, lacking. And I don't, I have no desire to postpone this process. I really want this committee to get going. I don't want this committee to in any way delay our work in responding to Chatham Park regarding additional elements. But I think it does beg the question, do other Commissioners really have an adequate grouping of expertise to think through the more complex additional elements, the more important additional elements?
I do want to say that to me, if we really want this committee to be effective, there's certain areas that we're going to need more advice on. And to me, that's affordable housing, it's public art, it's conservation piece. Some of those things can be grouped together, but I think that we need to put this together, we need the committee together in a very intentional way, not just randomly each pick some, because we need to make certain we have people on the board that can advise us on all these reported areas. And my vision has been that we identify the areas that we're going to need help with and from that, we pick, you know, since it's a board meeting, but we pick someone that we think represents, for example, conservation, pick someone that represents affordable housing. And to me, from that point, say the person we selected to represent affordable housing can create their own subcommittee, which can then present to the group as a whole. If I'm presenting it up, that's how I would do it because I think it's important that this group not just be randomly selected, but intentionally selected so that we cover the areas that we need input on. This is my fault. I don't have an idea of how much number. I think sometimes if you make a group too large, people end up not feeling responsible. They end up not coming. So I don't think we want to go higher than, say, 12. That's my experience of working on more, very difficult to look large. But I do feel strongly that we should do it in a very intentional way of making sure we have at least one person representing the areas that we feel like we want the most support on.
Regarding that same situation too, if we appoint our committee and as our committee gets together, if there is any area that we are a little, not as many consultants or community royalties with the elements, if we hire consultants at that time to commit, you know, as we make our commitment.
Well, I echo that sentiment that I think this committee is but one source of information. We do have the ability to hire consultants. We have the resources to hire consultants. We have many other boards. You have Parks and Recreation Board, we've got the Planning Board, we've got the General Citizens, we have County, we have the School Board. So I think there's a multitude of points of information for this committee being but one. And I don't think it has to encompass everything. You know, I think we've put out an advertisement out for a little while here and we've got many people who have signed up and suggested that maybe we need to find other people. I, you know, I think we should work with what we have.
And you think, Neil, well, we can hire consultants to help us with affordable housing. I think that if you have local people who have experience working in your community, they're going to bring something different to the table than folks from the outside coming in because broadly about affordable housing, but definitely there are local citizens. So I'd say.
I know that in the July meeting, we talked about, staff has made a recommendation that both affordable housing and public facilities aspect of the committee have consultants. And Michael, I believe you had said that you felt that a consultant should be soft for transit portion of it and also perhaps the lighting. I have a note here that preserving the night sky is something that was very important to you. So are those consultants going to sit with the committee or are they going to give, is that going to make the committee too big or are they going to just be raised on to the committee? I get that sort of question.
I know that recently then participating with the committee, I think they will be reporting to this board and consideration their expertise.
So my hearing that 12 or 13 is in the range of what we might fill in in section four of the resolution?
The only thing Commissioner Bottas is saying about the two, that we don't have enough people for each category that you have.
Well, I think it's a compelling question, but I'd like to hear your thoughts.
I think there's enough, well, based on the categories that you have, there is not enough because you wanted to fit into a thing. But if we were not to go exactly with those categories, the individuals that have submitted their names, I think they have sufficient expertise in a variety. Then if we fill that, there's additional information that we could need, we can always rely on consultants.
Well, we can always collect, if we select the categories we need or cover, we can collect those and if there's an area that we feel is lacking, we can appoint them. I consider that some of the key areas is open space and tree protection is one, affordable housing is one. And some of the things can be grouped together. Master public park plan is one. And then some of the others can be combined. I didn't really have a tuition for how that should combine, but that's, those are some that I'd like to see to make sure that we're represented.
Could you read this again, please?
I just had open space and tree protection, making sure that someone in the committee that can speak on, would be happy to, two areas, affordable housing. And then number H, well, just like master public facilities, including town administration police, fire schools, parks and recreation supply, kind of group those together. Master public park plan would be one, maybe transit would be another. Some of the other things like signage and lighting and parking, to me, could be grouped together.
Is that going to be considered in which we're looking?
Yes, yeah, yeah. I've abandoned my list because it, yeah, it's, well, you know, we've got what we've got. And unless there's others, and I don't think I'm hearing it, who have a hunger for more applicants, additional applicants, or additional expertise that we don't currently have in this pool, I don't want to go there. I'm good with the applicant pool we've got. I mean, there's some remarkable people and I'm really pleased and honored that we have so many people who raise their hands. Yeah. So in terms of subject area, that's a moot issue for me. Commissioner Baldwin, thank you.
I think too that the ones that you were targeting, that stormwater, parking, signage, and maybe the lighting, although Michael, preserving the night sky is very compelling. The staff had characterized those as more ordinance based.
Yeah.
Yeah, and could more easily be combined for the purposes of direction from Jeff Jones' argument.
And I don't know about Florida, I mean, I think we have staff that handles that pretty well too.
Yeah.
But maybe transit there might be a separate one.
Yeah, I think Mike felt that it needed to be separate and consulted, yeah. Am I hearing 13?
I'm comfortable, I'm talking sort of outnumbered, but I'm actually hanging 12. I don't think we're, isn't really a funding committee, it must have been a consulting house committee?
Well, I think it's going to issue some sort of an advisory opinion.
Maybe if you have 12 people, it'd be amazing if you had everybody there at the same time.
And someone could always write a minority report if they had a key area that they were disturbed about that the majority did not feel had been addressed.
I also think that it wouldn't necessarily be a minority report, it would just be a comprehensive report.
Exactly. I love how the planning board, how, I love how it's included now and what the consensus concerns were, very helpful to get the whole picture. I think the claim would be true here. I'd like to hear what people just thought far, even if, you know, I'd like to do what people do.
Brian Gruesbeck.
I had, excuse me, I had a conversation with Commissioner Bottas recently where we wondered if this committee would benefit during its discussions on facilitation. And I think it was Commissioner Bottas suggested seeing if David Long handles our facilitation during the winter retreats might be interested and available. And had a nice conversation with him today and he lives in Pittsboro and I think knows the community pretty well and said he would be interested in whatever capacity.
Great.
Fantastic.
I just offered that up.
And that would be to, an offer to the board to help it create the committee or to the committee itself to take its charge?
It's really open. I think when you get into the, when you get, you know, Mr. Bottas and I, when we were talking, I think we were kind of coming at that, he kind of came at that from one angle. I was kind of coming at it from another. And I think we both kind of saw where we were coming from at the end of the conversation and that yes to both. I mean, because as you're, as you're talking about what kind of report, what kind of information you want to generate from this process, I think it's important to have someone who can help tie that all together and possibly even, you know, write that report in effect and kind of represent the deliberations and inputs of the body. I think represent all the positions. So, you know, so the back end for sure. On the front end, if you wanted to, if you wanted to use, and that's what I was speaking with Mr. Long today, he certainly has some ideas on how to handle that committee on the front end as well. So it's really kind of open to whatever you guys want to do when he is available and he's interested in doing the individual conversation.
Mr. Gruesbeck, I'm curious, did you, did the topic come up, what we've discussed and kind of, in the event that there is some contentiousness or expected or anticipated contentiousness, that such a collaborative decision-making body might, might be asked to have ground rules or rules of entry agreed upon before convening?
Yeah, that would be, that would be part of this.
And you spoke about that.
Yes, sir.
He's done something similar to that, I imagine.
Yeah, he's as good as anybody.
Yep. Well, I'll just say on that note, I'll elaborate. What I had mentioned in my email to my fellow commissioners and the mayor's staff is that I think a trained skilled facilitator, any trained skilled facilitator would greatly benefit this effort. And I don't necessarily think that it's required that that person facilitate every meeting, but certainly the early meetings to kind of make sure that the boat is moving in the right direction when it launches from shore. And Mayor Perry, as I mentioned to you, I think that if you've got ideas about other facilitators, not all yours, but I think we'd do well to have at least one facilitated meeting for this body.
He's certainly did a good job with Snap and Board. I was really intrigued.
Yeah, and he knows, and he's worked with the board for how many years? Several at least to do these retreats. And I had thrown out another name, but it's somebody that is not as conversant with local and I think he would be. So do we have agreement that we would like to have David Long help us with the formation issues as well as to advance the boat from the shore when the committee does form and meet?
I'm afraid. Well, I must admit, I really struggle at understanding his role. His, a very specific charge, very specific demand on that committee. And I've looked through this list and I know several people here that are incredibly capable administrators. Tim Nass, for example, is a remarkable guy and can organize the committee. And quite frankly, Jeff Jones, our planning director.
frankly, Jeff Jones, our planning director, is going to play a lead role in working with this committee. And I think between Jeff's efforts and some of the folks we have here, I really, I just don't understand what David's going to bring to the table that we don't have here, other than possibly slowing things down. And that's my concern. Slowing things down, yeah, I would like to stand the committee up and have them start to work, and not wait on the availability of David to get here, and for him to organize and understand what the different elements are, and what the master plan is, so that he can effectively facilitate. And I think Jeff would do a fine job.
I guess I'm just wondering how we would go about, like, the committee, if we're trying to cover certain categories, I'd be interested to know what would be the problem.
Well, that does create a bit of a challenge. There had been a number of suggestions, among them being just a straight-out selective process by which each commissioner would choose two people, recognizing, you know, and I guess if you're doing that in blind, it would make it very difficult to know who is an expert in one area and who needs to be considered because their expertise is in another area. There had also been discussion about doing a more collaborative kind of selection process, and that would be something that David Long would be able to assist with. How that could be done, I'm not certain, but that would be up to him to help coordinate if we chose to do that.
He's retired, they also, I would think, in retirement, so you can take that.
No, really, in reference to choosing the committee, that's what you're saying? Facilitator to have us choose individuals?
I don't think so.
That's a committee?
I don't think so.
Yeah, that was not, I mean, like, we.
Perhaps with the process that we can make sure, because if we just each select two people, we could end up with people that have all the same skills, and we may not have these other areas that we need to cover. I don't think the two-person thing will work at all. If anything, if we had to do it today, I'd be more in favor of Commissioner Bottis' approach, which we know that, you know, based on board and staff retreats, when we pick our top ten, and you give the most points to number one choice, number two choice, we don't have to have a building to do that. But I'm always amazed at how well that works, you know, at our staff retreats. It really does identify the most important issues. And I do believe that that would have a better shot at coming up with the best committee, than just each of the two. I think that that would be the way to do it.
I'm not in favor of each of us picking two. I think as a committee, as a, you know, group, commissioners and mayors, we should actually go on just in the business, just as we do with the planning board, and, you know, the other.
I don't think that works very well either.
Well, we look at their, look at what.
Yeah, I mean, it ended up being random, but random also.
No, not really.
I think so, because I had people on my planning board, and then they got, they got selected for a chance, and, you know, so I, I'm not a fan of that.
Because I look at what they have submitted, in reference to what their qualifications are.
Whoever made, whoever made the motion for, it's just awkward. Like, sometimes you pick someone, and I think it's good, but it's not necessarily one of the top picks. You know, you pick that person, you got the good, or you try to hold out for the ones that I think are the best, you know, so it ends up not to me. A very difficult way to do it.
I understand what you're saying, but I'm, if.
Well, would it be possible, then, for each one of us to list the twelve members we want, submit them, and whoever gets the majority, that's it, and it probably will be the twelve, it'll be some subset of twelve, and do it again until there's twelve members.
You know, like the way it's done, you know, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and then, I choose your top six, and remember what, everybody's on the list, pick the most points, and then add it up.
So we have, we have each a printout, sorry, Commissioner Farrell, you've also got a copy. I might suggest, as a friendly amendment to Commissioner Bioco's suggestion, that we rank twelve choices with numbers in the left-hand column, and submit that to the town clerk, and we can table this for thirty minutes or later into the meeting, while she's tabulating those scores, and see what we come up with. I think that we can come up with a robust selection, because at least at that point, I'm satisfied that each of us is contemplating twelve people and how they will work together.
I think that's a great idea. And that wouldn't take that long for the tabulating to be carried out.
In my opinion, that's what we're doing.
Well, and it is somewhat qualitative, different in that, I'm chivalaging with somebody over somebody else, and maybe you would do a better job. So you're the best, you're the worst.
Right.
I'd like to have it, you know, presented in such a way, so I'd like to say, yes, I think you, I like you, I like you, without saying you're better than you, quite frankly.
Just check, just check off your top twelve.
That's it.
And I say it, I'm.
Well, then there's no way for staff to co-lead us?
Whoever, one person might get five.
Oh, whoever then gets the most points.
One person might get one.
What happens if a lot of people are on the board? That's why I think, that's why I'm.
You might have to run a second, a second. If we all voted for Brian Taylor for, for the first item on the list, then we might have to, you know, sit and run a second candidate.
Yeah. So on that note, I think that in conversations we've, maybe offline, and then maybe on Wednesday, and again, that was an informal meeting, we made no decisions, but I've heard it suggested, some concerns about, for example, Diana Hales being on this committee because she's already elected official. And certainly she can attend and observe the meeting, and if the, if the committee accuses, she can be asked to speak. But I would say something similar about Brian Taylor. I greatly admire his work on the planning board, but I think that we are already, we have his participation on the planning board, we have his participation on the technical review committee. And there again, I would view him as someone who could participate in kind of expatio or honorary, was that the phrase that you accused? Mayor Perry? Wednesday night?
I don't remember.
For Commissioner Hales, perhaps?
I thought I used liaison.
Liaison, liaison, okay. And I think there are others on here that we might consider in that capacity. And I think that that helps to kind of shorten the list a little bit. And I think that we should have that conversation and be clear before we, if this is what we're about to embark upon, is, if it's a ranking in this way, or a draft, I guess it's actually a draft, isn't this a draft process?
Well, a couple people have been working with that, and I don't think it's handled with that.
Well, I would agree with you regarding Brian, because the way I'm viewing this committee, there's one point on source of information for the talent to consider. And Brian will be participating in that through the planning board. So I agree that it probably does not make sense to also be in this way.
The planning boards will all, they will be looking at the elements really well, but, yes.
And I would say the same thing about our former mayor, Randy Bold, is that he's had an opportunity to have a great deal of input and historical context that he might be able to bring to the committee. But in my mind, the committee is forward-thinking, and perhaps doesn't need that historical context, plus he is a consultant for Chatham Park. Some of the resumes gave more description of people's interest than others. I would note that Samantha Burchard and Debbie Hamilton are both downtown residents who are business people. If, I know you gave James Leeway on your list, but I do think that is an important factor.
Another thought, along these same lines, and thinking about liaisons versus people who I would consider to be viable candidates for this committee. Jerry Horton and I spoke, and I thanked him for applying, and was just very impressed with his response when I met him, that Susan Levy had also applied. It turns out that Susan Levy is the executive director of the Orange County Habitat for Humanity. And I don't think he would mind me saying that, he actually said, this quote, "I would give up two of my seats to have Susan Levy on there." Not that he's got two seats, but it's that he respects Susan Levy that much, and her expertise in this field. And I gather that it's not just with, for housing, but with development and planning. So I was very impressed with his deference to her. And I would even make the motion that informally or formally, I don't know if it's necessary or informal, but that we consider Jerry Horton a liaison, that level of participation. His presence and participation, I think, is going to be vital to the committee. But I'm thinking of him as someone who, we would have him in the room anyway, I would hope.
Have we talked about individuals who might be more useful as liaisons, or in current position already advising the board?
Personally, don't think that it's appropriate for Diana as an elected official to also be on the committee. I think we need to be talking to her in a different capacity.
I think, I agree, I said that before, I think, now that the commissioner, county commissioner, she did feel liaison, but I don't think she should be on. I bet she can always attend meetings, have it done.
I think she, the county is definitely part of the conversation on this project.
Mm-hmm.
So I think she will be participating in a different capacity.
So help me remember, have we established twelve as a number of members? And do we all feel that putting a check mark next to our top twelve, putting a check mark to the twelve that we would favor is a reasonable way to do it, and then have Alice Lloyd tally and, and work within the context of a second round, isn't that, is that?
I'll need another printout, I've got that all over mine.
Okay.
Alice?
I got my work on it.
Well, Percy's making comments.
If you want to make a copy.
Yeah, okay. Anything further? There were some people whose, for example, was it Billy Hinton? No, it was Wayne Britt. No? No, it just wrote a single sentence that said, "I'm interested in being on the committee." I did not have.
Billy Hinton.
Billy, Billy's you, that's right. Anybody know anything about him? It would be helpful for us.
He actually served on the planning board years ago. He lives in Cornwall, I was developing, he's a local landscaper.
Did he develop those tiny, uh, pictures?
Which is nice.
He lived in Chatham County, he's a family, they're farming, dairy farm.
Thank you. So we were agreeing to remove one fourteen, seventeen, and twenty-five. So one fourteen, seventeen, and twenty-five, we decided could be either liaisons, or we would have already heard from them in some capacity. Do we write our names at the top of the bills?
Thoughts?
Yeah.
So at that time, we almost had enough to make it through the entire year. But now Earth is running out. The costs of ecological overspending are becoming more and more evident over the time. At what point will we have spent too much? At what date? When will we run out of air to breathe or water to drink? Well, that's already started happening all over the world, as you know. This is the foundation of the concepts behind natural capital. The underlying paradigm of our current economy, says Paul Hawken, author of The Next Economy and the Ecology of Commerce. It is the idea that the only way you can make money is to extract, steal, take, and externalize costs. That isn't the only way, he says, that's just the way we've chosen to do it. We depend on ecosystem services, also known as natural capital, provided by nature for free. Services like fresh water, fertile soil, clean air, game, fish, et cetera. But population growth, urbanization, and many other factors are damaging ecosystems and causing a massive decline in biodiversity. This loss has an impact on all of us. It affects our health, our well-being, and our livelihood. Setting a price on nature may seem wrong or even unethical, but if we do not stop to consider the value of nature and our own role as part of nature's systems, we will continue down the path of plunder and destruction until there is nothing left of it. And this does include us. And it is because nature and its services are ignored or undetected by markets that we haven't stopped to consider the impacts of this plundering on our very economy. But if we can demonstrate the value of nature in economic terms, it can help everyone, including policymakers like yourselves, to make decisions that consider the full costs and benefits of a proposed use of an ecosystem rather than just the monetary results of nature's products that enter our markets. The system of national accounts, or the SNA, is the internationally agreed standard of recommendations on how to compile measures of economic activity. Recent research from the SNA acknowledges that for the link between changes in wealth and sustainability to hold, the definition of wealth must be truly comprehensive and include all types of income generating assets, including those from nature. This includes non-marketed goods such as those previously mentioned, but also services such as watershed protection by forest filtration, and the inclusion of our consumption of these goods and services into our calculations of benefits and risks, and must also include expenditures to protect the environment from harms. Think of corporations, for example. They invest in research and development in order to build up assets for their future. No one questions their allocation of capital for these investments. And even though there isn't a financial return in real time, we all know that if corporations didn't do this, they really wouldn't survive. But if we're looking at investing in the planet, in her natural capital at the ecosystem level, e.g., save the trees and don't build the house, the first reaction is, oh, no, that doesn't pay. But yes, it does. Of course it does, because we're human and we draw from our pollinators, from our forests, our watersheds, the air, and our soil in particular. If we restore these natural resources and make them richer, better, more interesting habitats for life, we benefit, humans benefit. Nature is a closed system and a fragile system. It is a perfect system to provide for the diversity of all life forms on this planet, perfect for us. And nature provides everything, from the gasoline in our cars, the metal used to make our cars, to the soil for farming and the timber and stone for building, our clothing, our televisions, furniture, and appliances. It even provides for the air that we breathe, the water that we drink, and the food that we eat. We take and have been taking from nature to such an extent that the balance nature provides that sustains us and all life around us is no longer in balance. Today, we have over 7 billion people on this planet, and for all of these people to participate in our current methods of economic growth, taking from nature's resources for personal material gain with no consideration of the impacts, nature, of course, will run dry. And it has. So why is natural capital so important to us? Because right now, we still have a good deal of natural capital here in Chatham County, and we still have the time to change our ways of valuing it. A United Nations report from 2011 stated that the environmental impacts from that year alone were valued at $6.6 trillion. These are the impacts, or 11% of the global GDP. So what are the impacts of not considering natural capital in our economic equation? They're enormous, and they affect us all in many changeable ways, such as an increase in the number of plant pests, including those that affect farmers and crops, a decrease in the nutritional value of our crops as well as in crop yields, a scarcity of our water supply, as well as significant degradation in the quality of our water, but also impacts on air quality that threaten our very existence. So I'm going to share a few areas now where nature adds value to our economy and how we can begin to think and act differently about how we value it in return. I'll start with health. According to the World Medical Association, our health can be negatively influenced by the built environment through sensory inputs, both auditory and visual, things like traffic and noise and even restaurants and other business environments. Studies have shown for many years that nature has positive benefits for cognitive and psychological health, but recent research out of the University of Chicago and others has demonstrated statistically that nature also impacts our physical health. So including nature and our built environment can have a big impact on our economy and areas of health. But consider also air quality. We all know that trees and plants both provide the oxygen we breathe, but they also clean our air. The cost of asthma alone costs North Carolina nearly $1 billion every year. So again, it only makes economic sense to include natural capital in our decision-making as these decisions can have a big impact on our bottom line. This is a picture I took a couple of years ago when my husband and I were boating on Lake Jordan. Extreme weather events have been happening at an increasing rate all over the world. These will continue to happen more often, causing flooding and pollution to increase in our waters. Rising temperatures are increasing nitrogen levels in lake water, killing aquatic life, and increasing waterborne pathogens that affect human health. We've been seeing this happen already in Lake Jordan. Our region has been fortunate the past few years not to suffer from drought, which along with an increase in temperatures exacerbates these problems, and no doubt drought will suffer us again in the near future. As already mentioned, our crops are already at risk. The increase in CO2 levels in the air lowers the nutritional value of many of our crops. Current methods of farming through tilling decreases the level of desirable organisms that live in soil which make it, ironically, a natural sequester of carbon. So our farming processes are contributing to the increase in CO2, which in turn contributes to lower nutrition in our crops. But our health is also threatened by the chemical herbicides and pesticides sprayed on our crops, many of which have been identified as possible carcinogens. So our farmers and farm workers are greatly exposed to these chemicals throughout the year at serious risk to their own health. One way we can each help lower CO2 and ensure eating healthier and safer food products is to buy organic foods whenever possible to support organic farmers, and we need to identify ways to make organic foods more easily available to everyone. Rising temperatures have brought an increase in the pests that impact people. Those that cause diseases or even just discomfort, we're certainly too familiar with diseases suffered by many in our community brought on by ticks. The loss of habitat has also meant that animals that are typical carriers of these pests are now closer to human populations, increasing our risk. So reserving habitat should provide spaces for biodiversity and the animals that live there ensures there is a place for deer and other pest carriers that is away from human populations while protecting the natural habitat for many other plant and animal species in the process. The cost to our economy of ignoring our natural capital in areas of health are without a doubt enormous. We need a plan that includes a strategy for managing our natural capital in the areas of healthcare. So let's take a quick look at water and how it impacts our economy. Health is certainly one of the biggest areas, so this should go much quicker now. Water is a natural commodity, greater than coffee, cotton, and oil combined, yet we don't put a value on it. We don't protect it as a material value or as a limited resource. We need to be doing all we can to protect our water supplies, to value water as the natural resource it is, essential to all life on this planet. Nature's systems do the best job of cleaning water. So identifying where and how we can let nature do its job rather than people building substitutes will go a long way to ensure clean water for our future. If we begin placing an economic value on water and the natural systems that clean it and protect us from the impacts of floods, we can lower our cost of water treatment and stormwater management and improve the quality of water for drinking and recreational use. We need a plan for measuring the economic value of our natural systems in order to effectively protect our water sources for the future. Agricultural greenhouse gas emissions make up about 25% of global emissions. So it's important to study the ways we allocate land for farming and reconsider the impacts of what we farm and the capital investments associated with agriculture. As we consider placing a priority on buying organic foods whenever possible to eliminate chemicals from our diet, consider also the savings for the farmer in learning how to farm through organic means. A direct gain for the farmer is the money saved on chemical purchases for fertilizers and pesticides. And a good note is the U.S. organic industry posted new records in 2015 with total organic product sales hitting a new benchmark of $43.3 billion last year. This is up 11% from the previous year and significantly surpasses the overall food market's growth rate of 3%, just 3%. The demand is already there to support this ecosystem service and soil sequestration, and our county on a hold is really great in this area. So the increase in CO2 in our atmosphere is already having a substantial impact on the farming community. The truth is, plants that contain more CO2 are more attractive to many plant pests, such as aphids, that are very challenging for farmers, and you've probably seen this going on in your own gardens, I have. This is only going to get worse as temperatures continue to rise, our winters grow even shorter, and then the number of pests continue to increase as well. As with crops, trees are also impacted by the increase in CO2 and the rise in temperatures, which results in we're challenging growth environments. Timber yields have been reduced by the tens of millions across the country, while entire forests have just been wiped out by an increase in pest infestations and those insects that attack and threaten timber. We're finding that winters are simply not cold enough to kill off most of these pests, which have historically entered spring with much fewer numbers. There's a study currently underway by the North Carolina Climate Office and the USDA on loblawli pine production over the next century in this part of the country, and how climate change is going to impact this resource. This is because initial studies from 2008 showed an 18% decrease in biomass corresponding to the 1.4 degree increase in temperature at that time, at the time of the study, and that was just eight years ago. So we need a plan that supports farming practices that eliminates man-made chemical fertilizers and pesticides, a plan that supports our farming community and learning sustainable farming practices, which decreases the incidence of pests through diversifying plants in and around the crops. This is sustainable farming practices, and it works. We already have a strong base of sustainable and organic farmers and a community college renowned in this field that we can lean on to support education in this area. Also, we should develop a plan that identifies forests as natural capital, establishing an economic value for our forests as they sit, a value other than just cut timber, but adopt modern, sustainable practices of timber management, including guidelines, recommendations, and resources for citizens. Such a plan would allow us to better maintain the natural carbon sink forests provide in both trees and soil, and help us maintain and increase the capital Pittsburgh currently has invested in forested lands. As with our organic farmers, we have a strong base of experienced timber management experts in our community who can help us work on these efforts as well. So in the area of transportation, we can make big strides in how we approach road design. Transportation is the single greatest contributor to the rise in CO2 and the quality of the air we breathe. With this increase coupled with the massive deforestation going on around the globe, we need to address this challenge in both areas. First, in placing an economic value on forests as the largest natural sequester of CO2. But secondly, in designing better transportation systems that include bike lanes and sidewalks, and by making better there ensures there is a place for deer and other pest carriers that is away from human populations while protecting the natural habitat from many other plant and animal species in the process. The cost to our economy of ignoring our natural capital in areas of health are without a doubt enormous. We need a plan that includes a strategy for managing our natural capital in the areas of healthcare. So let's take a quick look at water and how it impacts our economy. Health is certainly one of the biggest areas, and it should go much quicker now. Water is a natural commodity, greater than coffee, cotton, and oil combined, yet we don't put a value on it. We don't protect it as a material value or as a limited resource. We need to be doing all we can to protect our water supplies, to value water as a natural resource it is, essential to all life on this planet. Nature's systems do the best job of cleaning water. So identifying where and how we can let nature do its job, rather than people building substitutes, will go a long way to ensure clean water for our future. If we begin placing an economic value on water and the natural systems that clean it and protect us from the impacts of floods, we can lower our cost of water treatment and stormwater management and improve the quality of water for drinking and recreational use. We need a plan for measuring the economic value of our natural systems in order to effectively protect our water sources for the future. Agricultural greenhouse gas emissions make up about 25% of global emissions. So it's important to study the ways we allocate land for farming and reconsider the impacts of what we farm and the capital investments associated with agriculture. As we consider placing a priority on buying organic foods whenever possible to eliminate chemicals from our diet, consider also the savings for the farmer in learning how to farm through organic means. A direct gain for the farmer is the money saved on chemical purchases for fertilizers and pesticides. And a good note is the U.S. organic industry posted new records in 2015, with total organic product sales hitting a new benchmark of $43.3 billion last year. This is up 11% from the previous year and significantly surpasses the overall food market's growth rate of 3%, just 3%. The demand is already there to support this ecosystem service and soil sequestration, and our county on a hold is really great in this area. So the increase in CO2 in our atmosphere is already having a substantial impact on the farming community. The truth is, plants that contain more CO2 are more attractive to many plant pests, such as aphids, that are very challenging for farmers, and you've probably seen this going on in your own gardens, I have. This is only going to get worse as temperatures continue to rise, our winters grow even shorter, and then the number of pests continue to increase as well. As with crops, trees are also impacted by the increase in CO2 and the rise in temperatures, which results in we're challenging growth environments. Timber yields have been reduced by the tens of millions across the country, while entire forests have just been wiped out by an increase in pest infestations and those insects that attack and threaten timber. We're finding that winters are simply not cold enough to kill off most of these pests, which have historically entered spring with much fewer numbers. There's a study currently underway by the North Carolina Climate Office and the USDA on loblawli pine production over the next century in this part of the country, and how climate change is going to impact this resource. This is because initial studies from 2008 showed an 18% decrease in biomass corresponding to the 1.4-degree increase in temperature at that time, at the time of the study, and that was just eight years ago. So we need a plan that supports farming practices, that eliminates man-made chemical fertilizers and pesticides, a plan that supports our farming community and learning sustainable farming practices, which decreases the incidence of pests through diversifying plants in and around the crops. This is sustainable farming practices, and it works. We already have a strong base of sustainable and organic farmers and a community college renowned in this field that we can lean on to support education in this area. Also, we should develop a plan that identifies forests as natural capital, establishing an economic value for our forests as they sit, a value other than just cut timber, but adopt modern, sustainable practices of timber management, including guidelines, recommendations, and resources for citizens. Such a plan would allow us to better maintain the natural carbon sink forests provide in both trees and soil, and help us maintain and increase the capital Pittsburgh currently has invested in forested lands. As with our organic farmers, we have a strong base of experienced timber management experts in our community who can help us work on these efforts as well. So in the area of transportation, we can make big strides in how we approach road design. Transportation is the single greatest contributor to the rise in CO2 and the quality of the air we breathe. With this increase coupled with the massive deforestation going on around the globe, we need to address this challenge in both areas. First, in placing an economic value on forests as the largest natural sequester of CO2. But secondly, in designing better transportation systems that include bike lanes and sidewalks, and by making better choices ourselves on the cars we drive and how often we drive, combining trips where we can. A plan that considers transportation as it relates to natural capital and the air we breathe can save money on road construction and maintenance and improve the health of our population, both from cleaner air but also by designing roads that include bike lanes and sidewalks, and therefore encourage human-powered modes of transportation. We need a plan that doesn't just accommodate an increase in traffic, but actually establishes a path to reducing it. The building blocks for our policy towards natural capital must be constructed on the foundations of an overarching objective to maintain the stock of natural capital that we currently have, at least intact, and then improve upon it. This is a pragmatic way of thinking about sustainable growth, given that the cumulative damage around the globe is now so great that it threatens to undermine any future growth prospects. As with any other key asset, such an objective cannot be met without intervention. Indeed, it is the absence of intervention which has led to the current, even lamentable state of many of these assets, a classic case of market failure, where in fact, in most cases, the markets do not even exist. The Chatham County Climate Change Advisory Committee recommends that you meet with area professionals knowledgeable in evaluating natural capital to provide an analysis of Pittsburgh's natural capital, and work with these professionals to develop a plan to protect and improve the natural capital in Pittsburgh, integrate this plan into the UDO now underway, and ensure we have an appropriate guide in place for the future growth. And therein require an evaluation of the costs and benefits of any proposed use of an ecosystem on our economy, considering those services lost as part of the development approval process, and not just the monetary gains of a product, housing, lumber, shopping centers, et cetera. Lastly, identify opportunities to promote, support, and educate citizens, business owners, farmers, and town employees. We all need to begin to think differently about the value nature brings to our lives. You are leaders in our community during a very challenging time, but you are not alone in this effort. There are already many governments around the world implementing these principles of land management into policymaking, many countries. The UK has a natural capital committee. The United States issued an executive order last fall to all federal agencies to include natural capital in their fiscal planning, and the Chinese government, right now, is consulting with the Natural Capital Project out of Stanford University to create a land management plan. The list goes on and on. Many businesses around the world are also working with professionals to change the way they think about natural capital. So we're on this together, and the Climate Change Advisory Committee stands ready to assist you in these efforts, most strictly with Commissioner Hunt, for sure. So thank you. Are there any questions? Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Thank you very much. Thank you for having me.
I have one question. You made mention of consultants, natural capital consultants. I'd be interested to know some of those people.
That'd be great. We're actually going to be on a conference call with one that's down in South Carolina tomorrow. I've got a second meeting that I'm going to be having with the county commissioners. So if you'd like me to bring those names to your attention, I'd be glad to send those to you.
Yeah, Michael.
Thank you, Michael.
Under new business, then, our first item is a site plan review for a lot, Lot 99 in the East Business Park, Victoria Vale.
The site for SP 2016-03, Lot 9, US 64th, East Business Park, is currently vacant in Zone C2. It is 0.91 acres located on the southwest corner of East Street and Industrial Park The site plan is for a one-story commercial retail structure that is 7,850 square feet in size. These are some elevations that we had. On August 1st, the planning board voted unanimously, 5 to 0, to recommend approval. The staff also recommends approval of the proposed request, subject to issuance of any additional local and state permits.
Is there anybody wishing to speak on this issue?
Good evening, board members and staff. I'm Mark Ashen for the C Group, a consultant for the project. I'd be glad to answer any questions if anyone has one.
Is it fair to assume the stormwater is a regional device?
That's correct. This was a business park that we did back in, say, 2005, and there's actually a open space lot that's not going to be built upon, that has a stormwater pond that handles the development for all the lots and the roads, plus has additional open space on it as well.
And I can see the parking lots queued up to connect to the parcel.
That's correct. And we align with the SECU driveway on the other side.
Further questions from Mark Ashen?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Michael Fiocca to approve.
Second.
Second, if I've got the votes in full. Those who favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, absolutely unanimous. We have, as our second piece of new business, a presentation on decentralized water resources for trucking facilities. Tim Baldwin?
Hey, good evening.
Good evening.
Brian, anything to you up or tell again?
All set.
Okay. I apologize for screwing this up, because I'm sure you will listen. But appreciate the opportunity to be back. I've been here a few times with some of you. Of course, now that this board has constituted, so I will, again, apologize in advance that I may be covering some things too repetitively for some of you and perhaps going too fast or too thin for others. Happy to discuss in whatever detail, answer any questions either as you go or toward the end, whatever your preferences would be. Feel free to ask anything at any point during this presentation. I did want to sort of both recap some things and also introduce some additional discussion and detail that has emerged over these past many months and even years in terms of the what, the where, the how of this facility. So initially... What am I doing wrong? I'm already, Brian.
Just go ahead.
Okay. There we go. The where. This facility has, you know, over some time, you know, looked at a few different locations. We have pretty much settled in now on this location, which to orient you, you can see the interchange of business and bypass at the upper right of that sketch, that aerial photography. The location is right at the intersection, just to the west of the intersection of Eubanks Road and 64 Business, and access to the site will be off 64 Business. Depending on the exact designs, the intersections, and the traffic issues and such, there may as well be a continuation through onto Eubanks at some point, either now or in the future, as in discussion. There will be public access provisions, as well as somewhat more controlled access provisions for some of the working bits and parts of the plant that there really aren't part of that, but there will be a significant aspect of a welcoming and educational and useful aspect of any engagement at this facility. Some of these things, again, we talked about some in the past. We've talked a lot about this facility being designed to, and state-of-the-art is an overused, you know, acronym or phrase these days, but something that has a unique combination of very advanced aspects of both science, technology, and nature, to, again, get this to be a much more sustainable facility than is customarily seen in this industry. It will initially now, what it's designed to do, or what it's planned to do, is start with an initial capacity of 250,000 gallons per day, 0.25 million gallons per day, expandable to half a million gallons per day, beyond if ever necessary, you know, as if, when necessary. Sooner or later, it could get bigger, but that's the initial plan for it, and at least in early stages, probably wouldn't need to go past that. While we have talked a lot about our desire to provide highly-treated reclaimed water for as much use as possible of reclaimed water, there will be a proposal to share some of the discharge permits and the MPDS permit that's in the town's name currently, and worked out an agreement for some sharing of that. In the event the demand for reclaimed water isn't sufficient at any given time, especially in the early years, so there's already some draft proposals being discussed among us and staff at this point, and that will be going a little further as we go here in the next several weeks or a couple of months. We'll be talking with you more about that. The proposal is to ask for half a million gallons per day of the Roverson Creek discharge, which currently is 1.25 MGV in the town's name, not asking for any allocation in the area.
So this will pump back to the town's plant?
Yes. Yes, this will go back and not necessarily share the exact outfall, but be adjacent to your existing outfall, 001 into Roverson Creek at the current plant. Obviously, part of the Sanford proposals that are being worked on will eventually convert that plant into a pumping facility, an equalization facility. You won't be discharging anymore from that plant at all, but this would have the ability to discharge from here if it was ever needed. It's also, this is a little bit later in the discussion, but it also would be conveyance of reclaimed water over to 3M to, you know, take the place or, you know, assume the responsibility for satisfying the terms of that contract you have with 3M once your plant goes on.
So is that a modification to the MPDS permit to change the discharge point?
Yes, the discussions with state so far have indicated what would be needed is a modification of your permit and the creation of a new MPDS permit in the name of the new entity, should what I'm about to say goes through in terms of a third-party design, build, own, operate, finance of this plant. So that discharge permit would be subdivided, segregated among then the two parties, the town and this entity. Which segues nicely into what I just said, and again, we have talked about this as a possibility many times over a few years, is, you know, we're proposing for the implementation of this facility to be done as a third-party, wholly responsible design, build, own, operate, finance of this facility. We'll talk a little bit more about that, and this is one of the newer topics to talk about in a little more detail than we ever have, and we actually, at this point, have this partner selected, and those representatives are here, and they're going to probably be the bulk of my presentation, evidence to the contrary so far. As part of that, though, we are also proposing that the town, I think it's important, and staff does too, for the town to retain the customer interface with utility customers of the system, so that they wouldn't be confused by who are they getting built from, whose service provided from, and all that kind of thing. And there's many places where this has been done fairly readily, and again, if I were to talk to that some as we go forward here, but we believe the town would remain the face of all public utility services, including this, including wastewater service provided by this facility. And again, we talked about this before, and we'll talk, you know, some more to a bit, but again, we want this place to be welcoming, to be a destination, to be a demonstration, to leverage into a great many uses beyond a simple, you know, treatment and dispersal or disposal of the product that we end up with, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute here. We've gotten a lot of the sort of interior structure worked out in terms of places of design, reactor sizings and arrangements, a lot of building programming for spaces, for gathering spaces, for flow logistics, access ingress, public spaces, private spaces, all of that worked out. We're now working more on the aesthetics, the site aspects of it, the gathering spaces, the educational aspects, the greenways, trailheads, informational and educational materials and placards, public art, you know, Commissioner mentioned earlier, the elements being a concern, and we're actually engaging with build more right now for some influence and the place and essence and involvement with that. All of those types of aspects, that again, we want this to be more than a baseline plan. So you'll see more of that very soon. I think I've shown enough of this before. Again, there's, you know, we can come back and talk about this any extent you want, but again, it's a combination of both advanced technology and nature in very unique ways to achieve very, very stringent quality parameters, but, you know, this whole arrangement, and there's some bits and pieces that are, you know, kind of cool technology to the engineering room, and there might be three of us that care about this, right? But it's really in the furtherance of this, of, again, harnessing nature in a much more sophisticated way than we typically have, of very deliberately creating a very comfortable place for a wide range of organisms to exist and do what they do to basically do the heavy lifting of this. And so if we have happy bugs, they're hungry, and they eat a lot, and when they're hungry and they eat a lot, they make a lot more baby bugs, and they eat a lot, and they make more baby bugs. But there's a lot of different species that like different conditions of temperature, of how much time, of food, of air condition. So being very deliberate on how we control all of that, and the end result is you end up with a much more diverse ecosystem, and much more robust, much more resilient, much higher life forms that are present than typically present in most wastewater ponds. I think it's, again, important to touch a little bit on the benefits of this, or, you know, when you think, I mean, we're doing some different things, some things that are new, both procedurally and technically, and, you know, some of the natural reaction is going to be, okay, cool, but what does it mean? What, you know, for a less eloquent way, what's in it for me, what's in it for the constituents, for the town, for the taxpayers, for the people? So we've talked about some of the less tangible ones, perhaps, in terms of a wide array of public education and engagement possibilities, a wide array of partnering opportunities for research and education and curriculum development, obviously, a furtherance of sustainability initiatives, at least in the water regime and the water realm. Somewhat much more tangible ones, as a third-party design, build, own, operate, finance, obviously there is no outlay on the town's part, either in initial CapEx or in operating costs or effort or manpower. We, again, have proposed to go ahead and take over responsibility for the 3M reuse contract, if we can be able to fulfill that term or extend that term as the town may wish, as well as, again, providing reclaimed water for as many possible uses as possible, whether it's indoor uses, energy production uses, irrigation, displacing potable water, lessening the demand on allocations required out of the Hall or Jordan Lake for water supply needs. And finally, once this plan is permitted, and it would be permitted for the full $500,000, even though it's only initially built for $250,000, that we believe that that capacity will be available to allocate against, so that while you are very, very thin on allocable wastewater capacity right now at the current plant, this full amount will be available to allocate so that you can keep up with the paper flows. And for that matter, the real flows, if it came to be needed, you know, Sanford lags a little bit in time-wise, then flows could be shunted to this plant, and growth elsewhere in the town, not just Chatham Park, but elsewhere in the town could be allocated against this plant's capacity. We think that's going to be, at least be a stopgap benefit for the next several years. It'll be very helpful. The third party, as I said, we have, you know, selected a partner to be the collaborator during design. during design, and then the financier, the owner, the operator of this facility, the name of the company is EnviroLink, and a sister company, Old North State Water Company, they are a public utility regulated by the Utility Commission, so there is oversight, there is involvement, but beyond that, these people own and operate many facilities throughout North Carolina, they in fact have a strong presence here in Chatham County, they own and operate Briar Chapel in Farrington Village, actually, of really good state of management and technical expertise, including engineering. I've known some of these people for 20 years, and it's been a very effective organization, very effective personnel attached to it, I've worked on key threes and public partnerships as well, of which this is one variation of it. So I'm going to sit down, and I'm going to have to use Mike Myers, who's the president of EnviroLink, and address you a little bit on who they are.
Well, thanks, uh, thanks Tim, Mike Myers, I'm the president of EnviroLink, and Old North State Water Company, as Tim indicated, I'm the new guy to the project, so I wanted to give you kind of a flavor of who we are, what we do, and how we might bring some value to the project here. Just some examples of some of the partnerships we have here in North Carolina in total. We do about, we help out between local governments, county, sanitary districts, townships, we help out approximately 40 towns in the state of North Carolina. Not paging up real well there, but we've been incorporated since 1997, we do more public-private partnerships related to water and sewer than anybody else here in the state of North Carolina. We are a North Carolina company, we are headquartered over in Raleigh currently, so as Tim indicated, we do have operations here in Chatham County. And so why do our clients, kind of, why do we work with so many towns, why do we continue to work with this? We did a survey a little while ago, and these aren't my words, these are really the words of our clients, but when we asked them why they've worked with us, three things kind of came up, and you'll get to see two of them, but confidence, integrity, and then what you can't see at the bottom of the screen is performance, and what our clients have to say about confidence is, our niche is infrastructure, and we allow our communities to focus on their core missions, and they can go to sleep at night with confidence that we have things handled. Integrity, we pride ourselves on our integrity, and simply we do what we say we're going to do, we work very well, in fact, we have a staff of former regulators, we, I'm actually one of those, having worked for the state of North Carolina, we have staff, you know, get into a little bit of our staff here in a little bit, I have two of them with me here, I bet our director of operations, Heather Adams, is in the back along with one of our engineers, Tim Baldwin, ironically, Tim Baldwin, we didn't have enough of them here, so we brought another one. But what we do is we focus on the owning, operating, managing, and maintaining water and sewer infrastructure, and we do that, and some of the, we stick to our ninnings, we have a lot of technical ones, but why EnviroLink, why EnviroLink, why should, you know, why should towns partner with us? One of the things we can do is we can deliver projects quicker and faster than local governments, because we can, we have a more streamlined process through bureaucracy of the state government, so we're able to get through those processes and be able to deliver a product on time and on budget. We transfer the risk, we transfer risk over to the private company, so as Tim indicated, you know, we would be financing this whole thing, so none of your existing residents would be burdened with the risk associated with residential development that gets transferred over to us. I think we all think this project's going to be a highly successful project, but we don't know, and so if something did happen with the economy in the future, and things, there was a downturn, that risk is on us. We are, we have, as the town, rather than tying up some of your financing capabilities for this project, you're able to utilize those financing capabilities in other areas. We also are a community partner, we work very vibrantly in the communities where we work, I mean, you'll see here in a minute, we're proposing to work collaboratively with town staff to be able to integrate customer service in our operation, and we currently do that for about 35 of our clients here in North Carolina already, so we've kind of got some processes and procedures down, and we've got the ability to kind of integrate with your existing systems. We support the local economies where we're at, and we actually, you know, we bring employment opportunities to those communities as well, Chatham County, Tim indicated, we have Briar Chapel currently, and we have Farrington Village that'll soon be coming online, but we have significant employment opportunities that we bring to the communities, and we're able to hire highly trained professionals to go along with us. Your standpoint, we eliminate your personnel issues, a lot of our clients have kind of lived through some significant personnel issues, I do a lot of training, and one of the things that I train a lot on is our industry, one of the statistics I usually throw out there is about 60% of our industry is either at retirement age or within five years of retirement age, that's a huge knowledge base in that's leading this industry of the coming years, and how are we going to manage that gap, because we're not doing a real good job of attracting new talent into the industry as an industry, we're not, so there's a huge gap that's coming there, and it's going to only get worse in the future years. And then we have a significant, we've invested a lot in our people and our equipment, and so a little bit about this plant, the Chatham Park, as Tim indicated, state of the art's kind of, that's an overused term, but I would say this plant's going to be kind of a paradigm shifting plant, typically you like to hide your plants in the back room and hope that nobody sees them, this, we're kind of shifting, turning that on its ears, this is something we want to be an education center, we see it as a vibrant resource for the community, we work collaboratively with the town and your staff, and then how we approach our projects is we couple a vibrant preventive maintenance program with renewal, what we call renewals and replacements, and that's just replacing investing capital back into the system to make sure that that asset maintains its useful life for well into the future, typically design these for about 50-year lives, so, and so you, but you do have to invest all the way along to make sure that that asset is maintained all the way along. Some of our staff locally here, we have a staff of five engineers on staff, one chemist, we have construction inspectors, so we think it's vital for the people that are going to be operating this thing long-term have a voice in how it's being designed, how it's constructed, and out there seeing what's going on. We have about $3 million worth of equipment resources within about 30 miles a year. Our staff are trained on the latest kind of industry standards, we have trained maintenance personnel, trained responding, customer service, we have trained, we have staff on, we have staff that are local that are trained in all these areas. Briar Chapel, for those that don't know, Briar Chapel is just up 15501, it's currently a 250,000 gallon a day plant permitted for 750,000 gallons a day. We are, we treat that water to what's called a reclaimed standard, and we have the ability to return that water, and we're currently using it for irrigation on some of the landscape features within the community, we are returning it back to residential homes in the community for use as irrigation water, and we're irrigating some of the county parks that are up in that area as well. Farrington Village, we're currently working on acquiring Farrington Village, our intention is to be able to take Farrington Village and interconnect it with Briar Chapel across the street, and be able to return some of that wastewater back over into the Farrington Village, and use, if you've been up there, he's got some hay fields and other stuff that he uses for his cows, be able to irrigate some of them. That's currently a 270,000 gallon a day plant permitted for 500,000. He has been, he is at the Jordan Lake Nutrient Rules, he's looking at a fairly significant capital upgrade to come out of compliance with that, so we're looking to bring it over to the Briar Chapel plant and be able to treat it to a much higher standard than it's currently receiving. Example of what we're capable of, this is the town of Robersonville, this is one of our municipal clients, you'll see here in a minute what we walked into, whenever we walked in there, they're in the Tarpan Basin, kind of down by Williamston, if you're familiar, kind of east of Rocky Mountain. Currently, that plant is one of the top, it's rated the number one plant in the Tarpan for nitrogen and number two for phosphorus, but what we walked into, it's a 2 million gallon a day plant, but what we walked into when we got there was this, and if there's any professionals, this is not what a plant is supposed to look like when you walk into it. The state, the SBI came in, they arrested the operator, there was an investigation into the town leadership, this is about as bad as it gets. We were asked to come in and help out the town, about, well, it's about four years ago we were asked to come in, within about 45 days, we took what you saw there and turned it into that, it's not, and went from, immediately went from one of the worst plants in the basin to, it was in number two and three for nitrogen and phosphorus when we, after we got done with this work, and we've been able to make some other modifications out there since that time, and now it's rated the number one plant in the basin.
What town is that?
Robersonville. This is just a sample of some of the, some of the people we work with, it, you can't, you can't do this alone, so some of the people that you partner with to help do the job that we do, you'll see them up here. And so just with that, I'll take any questions you might have, and I'm going to turn it back over to Tim for some, I think, talk about schedules.
And I would just say, you mentioned what that town was, but Mike has already offered this to Brian, so I'll make you offer in public and stuff, but like I said, you know, the entire client list, call everyone, anyone that you want to, and satisfy your curiosity. This is the schedule that we are on right now, which is to sort of finish the design permitting roughly the end of this year, maybe carrying into the very early part of next year, and for the plant to be in commissioning by the end of next year, and to be in operation within the first quarter of 18. So roughly 18 months, 19 months from where we stand right now, is what we believe we'll do to have this up and running. There are some moving parts to get done between now and then, some of the, some of the larger groups, and we'll be talking more about that as time goes on. With that, we've taken on probably way more of your agenda than you wanted us to, so I'm going to stop and invite any questions, comments, thoughts. Yes, sir?
Well, I'm really pleased to hear what you've said about excellence and making this project exceptional, and I'm a little bit confused, though, because early schematics that I've seen from Chatham Park investors show a demonstration, educational-type facility north of development, north of the city bypass, and that seemed a very prominent place, a place of pride, and this is a little bit farther off to the, at least in relation to what Chatham Park has shared with us about their plans for that, that region. So what can you tell me about that?
Yeah, we're expecting, and I may be putting words in mouth that Vanessa Robin would comment differently to, or more to, more robustly, but you think it's expected to be a major-focused gateway or very popular place, and 64 businesses, of course, heavily traveled for local folks, maybe not certainly the bypass, but local folks, and so again, we're, we're making this very visible for 64, very accessible, there are plans for some high-profile things along U-Banks as well, which is why we've set that a little bit closer to the lower areas on the western side of that site, for reasons both because of accessibility, getting the sewers into there, as well as visioning in the general vicinity, so we by no means have backed up on our commitment to make this a destination and visible, and a place we all, and you all, will want people to go to and show off. There are probably going to be many places within Chatham Park that that could happen, but yes, you're right, this has relocated from there, and I have other reasons for that.
Is this how high the capacity has been what you originally planned?
Just have what now, sir?
Is that higher for capacity than the original plan?
It has been back and forth and around, and part of the reason with the capacity we've selected now is largely due to timeline and the way things are looking to develop, as well as the timeline on when the Sanford option will come into play, since that has taken some time to develop into something that's actionable, and so there's a little bit longer gap to take care of in the meantime, so yes, this is a little bit larger, I think we might have started talking about 100,000 to 200,000 perhaps.
It's the most attractive wastewater treatment plant I think I've ever seen.
It will be the most attractive one you've ever been to, I promise you that. Other than, you might not know it, but in San Francisco Public Utilities, there's actually sewer plants in the cafeteria where people sit and eat their lunch, their sewer being treated in those planters, yeah, so I don't know, but anyway, part of it, though, too, is, again, with the Sanford project, the way it's happening is, is this will be the only facility generating reclaimed water for use back here now, and so having that larger doesn't necessarily mean there's any more going in the river, it means there's more going to displaced potable uses within the town and the development, so, you know, I think that could be made even larger if the need arose and the desire arose.
Can we look at the income if we take on 3M, and just figure how that would work?
Right, you have a contract with 3M for roughly 60,000 gallons a day, and again, that there's some quite long period of time remaining in the contract, and they've expressed an interest in either extending or expanding or both on that, so we want to make sure that we can help that be delivered on, and this should be able to do that just fine, so that you don't have that extraction to have to deal with with those guys.
Tim, you mentioned our old plant going offline, I don't, and I may overlook it, but I don't remember us discussing our old plant going offline.
Well, there may be other people that want to talk to that, then, but that's my understanding is where things, now granted, it has been talked about often, and wrestled with, you know, part of it was the economics of putting a lot of money into a plant that doesn't gain any additional capacity at all for you, and have to swallow a 15 or 20 million dollar project to go to Sanford as well, so there was a lot back and forth, I wouldn't say that the ink is dry, that's not my call to make, nor I don't think it is, but I don't know if we're Ed or Brian, we'll say anything to it.
Yeah, I don't think exactly to say the plant would be offline per se, because it would still have capacity, use is equalization and rent change, so we would still have, we would still have its staff operating, but it would, I don't think the intention with the engineering and the agreement with Sanford would be to have it operating, treating, discarding the same way as it is right now, it would just kind of be repurposed into a slightly different facility.
Well, I thought that, I thought that, when we went to Sanford, that our reused water was just going to be coming out of Pittsburgh.
But will be coming out of Pittsburgh.
Reused, going to 3M.
But...
Well, they just said that they would be doing reused.
Yeah, it's coming out of Pittsburgh.
Our old plant?
They, they would, as this is, as this is being contemplated right now, our, our old plant would not be producing the reused water, the new plant would be producing the reused water for both Chatham Park, Pittsburgh, which is one of the same, and 3M for the current and future.
But the new plant would not go on Pittsburgh, is that correct?
The new plant would be financed, constructed, and operated by, by facility for a given length of time, and then, as Tim said, it would be my recommendation to have the customer service point of contact and liaison be maintained. And then, as Tim said, it would be my recommendation to have the customer service point of contact and liaison be maintained by the town of Pittsburgh.
And that's all we've done, so the ownership would be private.
Yeah. Well, let me address that, and I have said this before as well, that, that there are lots of ways to do this, and, and I've been involved in a number of these, that there have been provisions in the agreements that at some point for the town to exercise an option to either regain ownership or operation or both. It's a question of when and what are the considerations to do that. I mean, obviously, if people put $10 million in here, the investors need to recover that capital in some form. But there can be a sliding scale of when and how that gets done. So I wouldn't characterize this as private entirely and forever of necessity. I don't think that's fair to say that. So that will be a negotiation process.
Yeah, that's one of my concerns as well, is transferring that permit. Didn't you indicate you wanted to transfer our current, current permit to this new plant?
A portion, sufficient to have firm capacity for this, even though we, we hope, plan not to discharge very much. If the reuse demand is there, we'd rather reuse, obviously. That's sort of the fail safe. But yes, we would need that. And whoever is responsible for owning and operating needs to be responsible for giving to the yes. I don't think you want the town in the middle of that liability chain or complying with that permit. So, so far, the discussion has been to subrogate, well, I should say, subdivide as opposed to subrogate. It's not to say you couldn't own it and subrogate that down to this entity. That could be done too, it might be a little more complicated, but it's possible.
So presently, our plant is designed in, well, designed to treat 750,000.
Correct.
Fred, I think we've increased the discharge permit to 1.25, or have we, have we accomplished that?
Yes.
Okay. So this 500 additional is what you're, you're talking about.
Correct.
Both plants can be running simultaneously.
Correct.
And at what stage, you had mentioned that it would free up some of the Pittsburgh Olds plant's allocation. At what stage would of your, of the project you're talking about enable that additional allocation?
As soon as, yeah, as soon as there is a permitted plant and, and PDS permit, that would be available.
And that, that takes it up to 90%?
You'd be able to allocate all of it?
All of it, not 100%, because I don't have to start construction.
Correct. Because again, part of this 500,000 is also allocable to growth wherever it is, with some connection in place, which there will be.
And this plant is envisioned to serve a drainage basin, not just property within Chatham Park?
No, I mean, it, obviously, you can pump waste anywhere if you want to. If you go pump 20 miles, you're about to, right. But no, it's, it's expressly for the town's use, with Chatham Park being the town as well. But there is not necessarily any desire or willingness to expand the borders beyond Chatham Park and the town that isn't part of Chatham Park, that entity, that consortium. If, if there were extra capacity and nobody else wanted it and nobody else cared, maybe that could be done. But that's going to be a joint agreement by all the parties that are in this room before that happens.
So the concept is just to serve Chatham Park?
Chatham Park and, and the town.
Well, the town, obviously, being annexed into, well.
I, I know.
Right, so it's just to try to keep it straight between a project by the name of Chatham Park and other properties outside of the master plan, the PDD district, will not have access to this plant. Only those within the PDD will have access to the plant.
The, the, there's a process, maybe Mike would want to say, but there's a process with a, with this private entity being regulated under the Utilities Commission. There's actually a franchising agreement that specifies an area that is serviceable by this plant, that's approved by the Utilities Commission. And they're not allowed to go outside that area without approval, the UC as well. So yes.
So the vision for that area is to be confined to the Chatham Park PDD?
It can be, as I said, it, it could be, if there's other parts of the town that are adjacent, that are, could be tributary to this, and they are part of the town, not outside the town, that could be done. I think right now, there's plenty of capacity, either just in Chatham Park, but sure if there were other adjacent, uh, towns.
Asking about the concept.
Right.
Not defining the area, asking if the area would be.
Yeah, I mean, we've even talked about shunting flow over from, from that area, frankly, to get flow started. I mean, the plant will operate more effectively with additional flow, with more flow. So it could be shunting some of that area around 15501, which isn't all just Chatham Park proper necessarily either. And an area that's, that's a challenge to get into the town because of some restrictions in your collection system on delay, as a matter of fact. So that could help with that as well, extend the life of those facilities.
With the development, let's say the metal block is building, obviously, it's already going to our treatment plant, but in that area, is it a gravity system that can get the, the flow to this location?
No, it would need to, it would need to pump across.
So there's going to be a several pumps.
Probably down that service road to the interchange and then down Chatham Parkway and eventually migrating over to this area, right? I mean, there's going to be a lot of that that goes on, you know, the terrain of the area, so everything does in gravity. And as a matter of fact, it's not always a great idea to do everything by gravity. You're having to install those interceptors in more sensitive areas closer to creeks and things like that. So I think there's going to be more pressure sewer than you normally see with gravity sewers, in the interest of protecting some of the sensitive areas as well.
So that'll be other systems that I guess the town will maintain.
That's up for discussion as well, whether both these collection systems are, are owned, maintained, operated by the town, or whether some portion of that is done by the third party. So that's, that's up for discussion.
Yeah, and I guess, and also, so thinking about the discharge point from this plant back to, discharge into the creek.
Right.
That would be privately maintained system? Is that what you're thinking? Right, so you'd be probably in the public private way, provision agreement, all that would be a team. So I think you, you answered this question, but as the owner of NPDS permit, then you would be responsible for any plant upsets or illicit discharges?
Yes. Town would have no liability, that would be all on.
Although the newspapers will say upset in Pittsburgh.
Yeah, it would anyway.
Yeah.
Fame's a tough thing.
So thinking about this system then, so billing will occur based on the water meter readings, the way it's working today, assuming it's got water use and associated sewer component. So the town would be reading the meters and sending out invoices or bills to customers. And a portion of it, that money goes to the town, a portion of it then goes to you. So we would be acting as administrator for your billing? And in this scenario, who grants allocation on, or capacity at the plant for a development project?
Well, maybe you want to answer this, it comes basically to town, because you'd have to approve all subdivision plans and development plans and all that kind of thing. So without that approval, there is no allocation. I mean, this is a support facility that's not designed to be the owner of economic development decisions. Is there the support, what the town wants to do for development decisions? We work. Pull my foot out of my mouth, it's all in my head.
No, 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 we work with, typically what we do is we have a process set up where we'll work with your planning department, and we won't grant that allocation to a new subdivision until that's been approved by your planning department. So they're not going to get an approval for us to do a project until after you've had some approval.
But Robeson Creek lies almost directly south of where your plant is. But instead, you're going to pipe it back up to our existing plant and input it there. Why, why would you not seek to input it down at the closest place?
Well, there, there's a couple of reasons. Not that that also isn't, there's a good reason to do that in terms of saving distance and piping and that kind of thing. But getting a new pipe introduced to a water body is not a trivial process. So where there is already an outfall location approved and studies done on that and all that, much easier to go that route. The discharge amount's already approved at that location. Any other location would not, that wouldn't be the case. Secondly, it moves reclaimed quality water toward 3M, has to continue on its way or connect to the facilities that now convey to 3M, as well as any place else in the town if there were access that that wants to go. So that would be the principal reason, those two things. The other opportunity is to go in the other direction to the location and the amount that's approved in the Hall River. But again, I think the, the reason this went from 750 to 1.25 is some concern on some folks that taking that water out of Robeson actually causes problems too, in terms of aquatic environment. And so they wanted to retain water, and Robeson in fact increased it. So again, getting open to the headwaters of that probably made more sense.
Any further questions?
Tim, could you describe what some of the next steps would be if the board were to review NPDS furniture?
Yeah, and that, that is probably the crit, one of the critical path items would be, you know, getting the procedure of the NPDS stratification started. So you already have a renewal application in play that the state here, permit actually expired in April. And it's just operating on the equivalent of a continuing resolution from EPA, so they haven't renewed it yet. So there would be an addendum to that renewal request to renew it at 750 rather than 1.249, accompanied by a new application in the name of the owner, presuming for the time being it's this third party, for the 499 balance. And then the allocation, the wasteload allocations would be divided accordingly into that. So then EPA would renew yours and issue the new one. In simple terms, that's the way it would go. Obviously, there will be, it's going to be simple with EPA and the state, but that's the plan.
You mentioned how critical it is to have a discharge to the creek and talking about adding a discharge, because you're not going to use the one that the town's using.
Right.
So that'll, I guess, be something to accomplish.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there are some bricks and mortar, some configuration to work out with, with plants that have to tread and all that, and the implementation logistics of it. But for all intents and purposes, it's another outlet side by side. Or at least, if, if we could use that same outlet, but move back, you know, the combination point to where it's clearly separated and that, you know, your compliance point is upstream of that, you're not taking any responsibility once they combine. Same thing on this plant, you know, the compliance points come back from that combination. They may combine before the single pipe entry, that will be a discussion to EQ on how they would like to see that. Whether it's really parallel pipes or just, you know, essentially a Y into that pipe someplace around the plant is also possible.
Where does the, where does that meter, where does the meter exist?
At the plants.
Okay.
The flows are monitored at the plants respectively.
So I'm suffering from some confusion here. I'm going to give a little prefatory, preface comment.
It's a big club.
Before, if I may, yeah, thank you. I'm glad to be a member of that club. Confess my, my lack of knowledge. I'm always learning, I'm eager to learn. But I, just kind of fundamentally, my preference as an elected official would be that the town of Pittsburgh will be responsible for its wastewater treatment and its drinking water. And so while I recognize with the very solid work of town staff that we have an opportunity to do a force main into Sanford, I will be far more comfortable with that project if I have an assurance that we are also simultaneously planning to develop and build our own sewer treatment capacity. I'm also, that said, keenly interested in public private partnerships, not opposed to it. I just want to understand this better, because I'm really confused by what I've heard here tonight, about whether or not folks in the old part of town would be able to have their sewer water treated by this new plant. So can you clarify that for me, and again?
Well, again, at, at the size we're talking about, I mean, we're still talking about a small plant here. So in terms of where you want to feed it from, you know, the reality is there's going to be more that gets developed in Chatham Park before they're placed in the town anyway. So it really is a shorter term measure to keep momentum going, you know, everywhere in town until that larger Sanford project is completed or can be completed. But that's three to five years out. And this is a year and a half, two years max out. So there is a gap in there that, you know, I don't like using the F word, but you're under essentially a self imposed moratorium when your allocation capacity runs out. You can't build this this fast. A public entity, a P3, the way the procurement rules are, you cannot do it this fast. That's part of the, part of the challenge, part of the opportunity.
Okay, so I'd like to, listen actively. I hear you say this would be a relief valve to the relief valve. Because I've heard this Sanford Force Main described as somewhat of a relief valve. It gives us the capacity we need faster than we could build a large centralized regional sewer treatment plant, build, own and operate by the town of Pittsburgh.
And even that, frankly, is a phase two. Because that 2 million plus this 250 or 500 is still not the long-term needs of this area. There is a phase three coming of some description when both of those projects are getting to capacity. And whether that's more to Sanford, whether that's, again, another bigger regional town plant, whether something else has materialized in the intervening 10 years that is a better option. That was part of the, frankly, early on, we talked about the, the, you know, the value of phasing and staging. One of those is leave your options open as things evolve and things change, whether it's regulations or technology or economics, that a better option appears than trying to build 30 years worth of capacity day one. And then frankly, being left in the position Sanford's in, a little strained capacity that they need revenue to help support.
But one time you were talking about building three small wastewater treatment plants at this part of that, is that what you're talking about?
Not necessarily at this point, because that predated the Sanford project frankly. So that has really served to become the more attractive phase two to everyone, as opposed to the next plant or the next larger plans or, or whatever. When it's time for phase three, you know, that and other options will be back on the table, whether, whether it's another local plant or whether it's some external regional options.
Excuse me?
Go ahead.
Sure. Additional question. The, I'll just call it the greenhouse, the nice educational, clean it till you can drink it again, demonstrating your educational project. That has been described to me as, at one time, it was to be a very small capacity, really just for demonstration, not for taking care of any substantial portion of the wastewater. What portion of the educational component of this new project proposal would be going into the greenhouse and what portion would be just cleaned to the quality that 3M would need?
Yeah, that, that may have been presented in a, in a kind of not perfectly accurate way. We're not building anything that is just there to teach and have no functional use. This is a working plant. Everything there is doing a job. The educational opportunities, research opportunities come from studying how that's done. done and the tweaks to it and making adjustments and looking at those things. So this is still working. There's none of this that's being played with and then reprocessed because it may or may not be limited. So the opportunities are studying the actual working environment and facilities. So there was one facility that was built with a little adjunct demonstration process of a different description. But that was still getting into the produced water stream. It may have been parallel and doing different things, but it was still part of the total capacity of the plant. And this would be too. Now, we may do some other things. So I'll give you an answer and then I'll give you a different answer 10 seconds later, right? So there are opportunities to do some things, we think, as demonstration projects, perhaps for some uses that either aren't done very much now or aren't fully permissible right now. And we've had conversations with folks, the state, the federal and NGOs about these kinds of things for 20 years, all different kinds of things, some of which are now done because they were proven. And there are those opportunities that exist today to do some of those things that aren't currently automatically approvable in the regulations. So there may be some of those kinds of opportunities to do a demonstration and push the envelope a little bit on some things and a managed rescue bar. Does that make sense?
I hear you. And I'm still trying to wrap my head around it. So I believe that what I'm understanding you to say is that the quality of the water coming out of this plant, it will not all be going through a man-made wetland. It will be made to the specifications needed for reuse, but not necessarily for redrinking.
Well, you won't drink water coming out of a man-made wetland. This water will be cleaner than what comes out of wetlands. This water will be cleaner than any required limits for any use permissible right now in the state. This will be clean enough to include in an augmented direct potable reuse project. The rules exist right now. No one's done it yet. This will be suitable to do. Now, you don't take this and drink it. Nobody does that. And we're one of only two states in the country that have a direct potable reuse regulation at all.
I've heard that. I understood that.
Yeah. So, so there are opportunities like that. But we're, our goal is to produce water that's as useful for as many uses either currently permissible or that might become permissible. And that's what it will be. It will treat to, in fact, some of your discharge limits are more strict than any of the reclaimed water limits. And we will go beyond that.
Okay. Thank you.
I have just one other question. Basically, this will be a new plant, as you were indicating, and the current one will be, for the most part, not doing what it's doing now. So what effect will it have on the current infrastructure in reference to the pipes and all of that that are currently taking the waste over to our wastewater treatment? Are they going to have to be replaced?
No. My understanding, and this is in some of the DERs that are both created and being created by your consulting engineers, that the plant will be repurposed and that essentially being the central pump station to go to Sanford. So everything is still going to go where it's going right now. It's going to end up at your plant location. And then that's repurposed largely for an equalization and pumping facility to then continue on its way.
So yours has nothing, will have no effect? That's what?
No.
Okay.
But doesn't it make somewhat tricky timing with respect to the, what you have already indicated is three to five years for us to get Sanford online? And is there a possible intervening gap there when you're going to be needing our capacity at the plant and we're going to still need it because Sanford hasn't come online yet?
Beyond what has recently been worked out for an agreement of roughly 30,000 gallons a day is being allocated to Shannon Park and you're retaining the balance for other time development, we're not expecting to get any more of that. So this plant needs to handle it for whatever period of time it has to handle it. Your plant will still handle you, right? For as long as it needs to, until you're done with that project. The overlap is if we talk about, as we talked about before, being able to use this plant's permit to allocate additional flow. So you just have to keep an eye on the accelerator and, you know, when will that flow materialize? You know, you're not going to be able to allocate above the full 1.25 entry.
Right.
Right? Until and unless we can document reuse capacity as full capacity. We have enough time under our belt, we possibly could have firm capacity for some of the reclaimed water that's being used on top of the discharge capacity. So that's again why I talked earlier about this possibility, this plant could become bigger if needed beyond the discharge capacity because it's not getting discharged. It's going onto reuse. If you can convert that to fixed firm capacity, then you can get those allocations approved at the state. But they don't accept your word for it out of the gate. They want to see the documentation that you're really using this. So that will take maybe a couple of years to do that. Does that make sense?
Well, it does, except that I was thinking that you're taking the 3M reuse onto your side of the aisle and you're already doing what's going to be done at Briar Chapel in the Farrington. And that's going to leave us without a reuse credit back because the reuse lowers the amount of the capacity of the discharge, right? Or lowers the?
Well, not. Exactly. Again, if, essentially, you're producing whatever you're producing out of your plant, 60,000 of that is going to 3M and the balance is going into Robeson Creek. So to the extent you could treat more in your plant, you could still discharge the full 750 into Robeson. You know, the 60, that is coming from another source. So you're, one way or another, whether you're sending it to 3M or we're sending it to 3M, you still have 750 that can go in the creek. So that doesn't really change for you where it really came from. What changes is that you're not having to produce that. So now the 750 that's going into creek from your plant is all water you're taking to make discharge work from like the headworks. Does that make any sense?
And I guess, so I think follow up on that. The need to transfer the 3M water from the town's plant to this other plant at the time at which town's plant is converted to send water to Sanford?
Yeah, that's the most sensible time. There's really no great urgency to do that ahead of time.
So it wouldn't happen when this plant got built? It'd be when our plant is launched?
If you didn't have the water yourself, to send it anywhere.
Right. Right.
I have a question. Maybe it's more better entered by staff, but in unlike Commissioner Bottas, I'm still trying to crack my brain a little bit too. I'm wondering how this will impact the town's revenue long-term? If the loss of income from 3M, for example, what happens if instead of the town of Pittsburgh, of course, we wouldn't have the cost of building wastewater treatment plant, but at the same time, this loss of revenue in the long run if they're treating that instead of us? Just wondered how it would impact our bottom line? And also, I'm concerned about if we do end up taking over some of these smaller plants, how does that impact the town's bottom line as well? Because instead of operating one big plant and paying for staffing and for maintenance of equipment, we've got these multiple ones. And I'm just wondering what the implications would be for the town in the long term financially?
All right. Let me start with the first one. And there may be others, as you said, that may want to weigh more. The agreement's not written and signed. I don't believe I ever said that the revenue travels with the responsibility to fulfill the contract.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of what is.
So it's not necessarily that we're thinking that revenue goes to the third party rather than just staying with the town. We have flow and we're making the reclaimed water anyway. Don't mean we have to recover.
I understand you're going to want to recover what you've spent.
You guys need to cover years.
Of course, you're going to need to recover what you've spent. I mean, that's.
The bottom line is that, I mean, we have a service that we're supposed to be providing to the public at cost. And in theory, that cost, you know, expenditure should balance our revenues. And that is the bottom, and that is the bottom line goal with this. And as long as we're putting into it and getting out with the same amount and providing a quality service that our residents are responsible or our residents are satisfied with at a neutral or lesser cost than what they're paying now, that's also what we're shooting for. We're certainly not making any money on reuse nor would I think that that's going to be a money-making, you know, we didn't, we didn't ever go into that and I know my predecessor probably mentioned for that this year tonight, never went into it with the strategy of actually making money. It was an issue of, it was an issue of capacity, of providing, you know, a sound environmental service and in the future finding additional customers. And I think we're going to be able to do all of that under this arrangement once, you know, once we approve that transition if the time comes.
Any further questions? We're ready to, to move. We've received the presentation and provided feedback, although I think that is where we need to advance.
Yeah, I really appreciate the presentation and I look forward to learning more and particularly learning more about what we would need to do as a town to ensure that we have access to treatment capacity if we're giving discharge allocation or selling discharge allocation.
Yeah, I gotta, I'm a little, I gotta, then I'm a little bit confused about what you're asking with that because I don't want to belabor the conversation that horse is on the ground wheezing. I mean, we're, we're looking at increasing our capacity in terms of the Sanford agreement, which would come online within a given period of time. We're talking about also increasing our capacity with this arrangement, which would come online with a given amount of time. All of that capacity would be used by Pittsburgh. So unless I'm oversimplifying or missing something, I'm not really sure what we're giving away.
I withdraw the phrase giving away, but it's not like, I mean, we're, there's, there's an arrangement here and my understanding and as Shannon Park is annexed, of course, that is Pittsburgh, that is us. I'm wanting to think like a big town, but I'm also wanting to make sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's and ensuring that we have adequate capacity at every point in the, in the transition.
Yeah. And that's, you know, that's the goal of all of us. I don't think, I don't think any of us are going into this spending, you know, five, six figures, you know, with the idea of, you know, we're not right to have enough capacity. I think, you know, stopgaps to me are something that are very near-term solutions. And what we're talking about here is something more on the magnitude of a 10-year curve, which is going to get us to the point of actually, as Mr. Baldwin said earlier, looking, you know, at that phase three solution, you know, after say year 10, 11 or 12. And so that, at the end of, at the end of the day, we've got to get to, according to Buildout, according to the information at PER, approximately 4.5 M D. And what this is doing is getting us over, well, over two for about a 10 to 12 years. That's, that's a little bit more than stock there. But it's not all the way there definitely and we've got to keep working behind it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're welcome.
The next item under your business is a request from the Shannon Community Food Council for a representative from the town of Pittsburgh. Are there appointments that we'd like to discuss at this time?
Well, I had a very interesting conversation with one of our former board members, Beth Turner, who was serving in that capacity and has been unable to meet the meeting schedule that the committee has formed. So, well, I spoke with her and she was interested to continue and she said that she couldn't do it. But she suggested that perhaps Beth's son, Owen, would be interested and I called Beth today and I think he is interested and I think he'd be a great selection seller.
Yeah, maybe lots of enthusiasm.
Yes.
I was just giving you background. It did occur to me that he was interested, but I contacted him and he's very excited about the idea. He has his interest in eating healthy food. I get started, it was just, I didn't learn it, it was yesterday. He's always had an interest in healthy, healthy food, how to make it more available to more people. So I think he was very, he can be very, very concerned with this project. He has a lot of skills. He's very talented. The PR background on the website, he's a filmmaker. He tells me he has a lot of skills, but he doesn't have a degree in cooking. So I was concerned, I want to be honest, he is here now. He doesn't know how long he'll be in the area. We want to be honest about that. I asked for a few years ago and he's done that alone. Now it'll be in two years. But I'm glad we can see if we're confident in that.
Well, one of the places he doesn't know is he might give this one.
Right. He might be.
Is there a motion? Other candidates for consideration or a motion? Is there a second to Michael Theo's motion?
Second.
Seconded by Beth Wilson-Fulmer. Those in favor, please indicate my thing. Aye.
Aye.
Those folks, personal carriage.
I just want to add, he's been involved in the issue report to the town board.
Well, yes. That refers to management's report or do we want to tackle the committee again? Alice has tallied our list of things. Do you want to pick? Quick look at that. Or do we have the management's report? Brian?
Well, you certainly have printed copy of that. I don't, it's not at risk of sounding like college customers, high school history. I'm sure you've all had a chance to read this. But, so I won't go into a heck of a lot of detail other than we are, we are currently in process with the issues that we've been, that we've been discussing in terms of the agreement, Sanford agreement, developing language for that for the Sanford Board to review. We're still looking for a contract to review, looking for their design work. We have some cost estimates from Sanford to develop the equalization at headworks at the wastewater, our existing wastewater treatment plant. And that of course, that, that reviewing those and we look to put those together along operations and maintenance estimates for not only the existing wastewater plant, but the forest main in general. And we'll be looking to bring that back to you for some analysis like that. That's, I think, going to be good stuff, but we're, we're certainly making sure that we've got a complete picture of what the overall cost to the consumer are going to be at the, at the end of all this so that you can make a good decision on it. And then also too, the Robeson Creek Bridge, as I mentioned at the previous meeting, is looking to begin construction in early September. We've had some meetings with schools, fire department and our police department. And it appears as if the traffic flow is going to be tricky for that, given that it is a, I guess, a state or a truck bypass. And so that's going to have to be managed around, really the big issue being managing that traffic around the Pittsburgh Elementary School and Old Goldston Road. Working with the schools to make sure that they are letting parents know to use the local streets and try to avoid 87 when they're coming in. And we'll certainly be working with DOT to make sure that we've got the freshest information and we can, you know, we can make those announcements and work with DOT construction as much as we can.
and we can make those announcements and work with D O T construction as much as we can, 'cause just like with any sort of New World Order on wastewater treatment and any problems that could ever occur with that, we're gonna be getting the phone calls on it, so we'll be prepared with that. I guess another, just other news, real quick off the script, we had a water main break yesterday over here in a corner at North Small Street in Thompson, you can see where the hole was opened up, we managed to sleeve that off. I think there's a little bit of gravel still left on the surface that we may need dissolving. It did have the effect of raining our tanks quite a bit, but I think we managed to get it to the time. The, so, we're not expecting any more problems with that, but we'll keep an eye on it. We also began the task of, or will be, actually, began it a little bit today and be working on it more tomorrow. If you, if you look in Chatham Forest, as you're driving up the hill, you'll see a vault on Chatham Forest Drive just near the road, and I forget the name of it, that operates as a cut-through required tower road.
Thank you.
There's a vault there that we're installing, a pressure-reducing valve in there, and that was avoided, avoided in fact, by the maintenance, I haven't, we're currently working on, and eventually, that'll be, I believe, in conjunction with some of the north side water system improvements, which we are having, again, having meetings with the state and with Chatham Park on some input the staff has provided to the modeling for that project. So we're looking to iron some of those issues out, and then come back to you with the overview, I guess, of the north side water system improvements before that project begins. So with that, probably a couple other things I'd like to mention, but we'll tap out, and if you have any questions, please do. Bring them up.
Commissioners' concerns, or back to the committee? Okay, Michael Fiocca wants to do two quick things.
Okay, just, I'd like to get an update, not necessarily at this moment, but next meeting, about the status of the recreation master plan. We've budgeted that for this year, select a note, we're making progress.
Has been budgeted, we'll, we'll let you know what's gonna happen.
Okay. I typically end up at Page Vernon Park after a run, and I've been going through there, and this last, last night, there was just a lot of trash, like a lot of trash, and it was unfortunate, so I'm just, I know that's probably an odd thing to happen, but I think from a regular maintenance perspective, the trees there are really dumping a lot of acorns and whatnot, and so it makes it a little bit less accessible.
You say trash?
No, it was cans, bottles, and.
Well, that's not the ground, or overflowing from cans?
I wonder, I don't know. Yeah, I couldn't say.
We contract.
Maybe it was pretty deep in there.
We contract with waste industries to have the trash cans, so I wonder if they're picking up anything that's still.
It was very noisy.
If it's not being, if it's not being done, then we'll follow up on it, and I wasn't aware of the issue of acorns either.
Jane Carroll, is he?
No, I just commend the town board, I'll need to go by the board break, I know they still have a problem finding that, so we're always working on it.
Yeah, it's the more you know.
Yeah.
Tom Bunn?
No. Thank you.
All right, so I passed out Alice's tally on the, on the vote, and it's interesting to note that if you just took the one six, the fives and the fours, we would have eight members of this committee. If you take the sixes, five fours, and threes, we'd have 16, or we can vote off, do a vote down on those 16, or on, or on the threes, that might be easier.
I think it was 16. Too many?
So how many of the sixes, slides and fours?
Eight.
So of the threes?
With the threes, there are eight more, so it's 16.
Which essentially is a good, the same process for the threes? And take the top four, the others, vote yours?
Would people like to do that?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just point out, we're, we do not have any natural resource expertise, environmental expertise, conservation expertise at all in that pool of eight.
Is there an artist?
Nope. Well, I could be wrong, I thought the only artist on this was Sherri Westmore. So, yeah, I would support us going to the second round of selection on those who garnered three votes.
And we just choose four of the threes. That's not gonna be enough.
Let's be really clear about who those candidates are.
Okay, the numbers three on the list are Wayne Britt, Billy Hughes, Sherri Westmore, Patrick Freeman, Doug Emmons, Elaine Kierso, Tyson Miller, and Rebecca Maeve. So out of those eight, we need to choose four to make a committee of 12.
That would be a one point advantage here, Sherri Westmore is an artist, would be great to supplement by the people we have at the Hall of Fame. Other people in the room, I don't know, one chair.
You sound like a clean woman.
Yes.
Well, we talked about a downtown business person, and we've got Samantha Burchard on that. We've got an economic development person with Doug Emmons, oh, he's a three, so.
This is tough, I'll share with the group that, or remind the group, that Rebecca Maeve is an in-town resident and an employee of the Center for Living and Learning, the Autism
Just so that the public may wish to know, James Nass is on the committee, virtue of receiving a six. Susan Levy received a five, so she is on the committee, so is Samantha Burchard, so is Rhonda Mathis, and so is Anthony Davis. Those are the eight people that are sixes and fives, and then fours are Eric Braun, Kathy Moore, Joe Suprick. Right, while we're finishing up here, a citizen asked me about the gravel in the Courthouse Circle, and thought that it was very dangerous, and wondered if public works or someone could work on that.
There's gravel?
There's, apparently, a truck came around a little too fast and spun gravel out to the side there, of course, at the annex, as well as the area at the B P station. Could you read the eight? Pardon? Could you read that eight? Names, and list them in here. The eight names are Eric Braun, Kathy. Oh, no, not the ones you're voting on now, the ones. Correct. The top, the top eight.
Already selected.
Yeah. Kathy Moore. Okay. Susan Levy, James Nass, Joe Suprick, Samantha Burchard, Rhonda Mathis, and Anthony Davis. That's seven.
Oh, Eric Braun.
Okay.
Yeah, we're open to attract a younger demographic with much of this development and higher density and walkability.
I'd like to remind you of Robert Simon, who started Reston when he was 50, turned 100, you see their 50th anniversary at Reston.
Actually, I believe Tyson Miller's already filed for creating a campaign committee for running for public office.
Sure he is.
Do we need to wait for a head count on this, or shall we adjourn, or what?
Oh, yes, let's wait.
No pressure, Alice.
Mr. Gruzbek, along the same lines of the gravel in the circle, this is outside our town limits, but I'd inquired some time ago whether or not we might ask D O T to pay a little bit closer attention to the overpasses and the bridges. They're really dirty, really messy, there's, I drove over the Paul River 15501 today and saw a bunch of debris that.
Why, can we do it again?
That'd be great.
Thank you.
And the surveying seems to be going between the mill and the Lowe's Home Improvement, and that construction was supposed to start, when it was? The relaying of the 15501 between the mill and?
19.
18 or 19?
Over there.
I don't know that we had a motion, by the way, on the resolution that Mr. Melchick did.
I would suggest that in light of your comments, or Mr. Dever's comments about restricting or defining the demographic area that you're intending to cover here, that instead, in the first, the second whereas, where it says the residents and property owners within the town in its extraterritorial jurisdiction, delete that and substitute the Pittsburgh community.
Okay.
And similarly, in paragraph four, where it says the various areas of the town in its extraterritorial jurisdiction and its general population, delete that and substitute the same, the Pittsburgh community. Vague enough to be all encompassing, or all encompassing enough to be vague, one of the others.
And that review would be number 12, and the change in Mr. Melchick?
Yes.
Does he? Is there a motion to accept the resolution?
Just a minute.
Motion by Michael Fiocca, seconded by Pamela Bolton. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Discussion?
Oh.
Sorry.
Discussion, John.
Yes, discussion. So, I thought we had some conversations about removing the name Chatham Park from the name of the committee, and I think it's, it's important that we make this clear that this is about enhancing and improving Pittsburgh, that this is not just about the Chatham Park project, but it's about our community, so.
Well, but it's a committee to look into the Chatham Park additional elements. They are the only additional elements that we're asking them to look at, so it seems appropriate to identify which additional elements we're asking them to review.
I'm really surprised to hear you say that, Michael, because you had said to me after the last meeting that you also agreed that we should have a broader name and eliminate any confusion about this matter.
I did agree that it should be a Pittsburgh committee, but the committee is reviewing the Chatham Park additional elements, so to remove the order of Chatham Park is odd. I think it clearly identifies what this committee is, who this committee is.
No, it didn't make a tremendous amount of leeway of here in so much of, oh.
Yes.
Did we have a, we had a motion and a second?
Yeah.
And are there any further questions or discussion?
No.
Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Back to our committee, we, we have one person who received four votes, and that was Rebecca Maeve. Six people who received three votes. Wayne Britt, Sherri Westmore, and Patrick Freeman, Doug Emmons, Elaine Kierso, and Mike, and Tyson Miller. And so, so it would appear that if you wanna do it the same way that we did it before, that we would now add Rebecca Maeve to the roster of the other eight that we've previously chosen, and that we should work on the threes that I just named off. So your vote would be, if you wanna do a, since we don't have to make any more copies, copies, why don't we make a different mark on this one? You, you could have, have something, make a mark on...
I could have anything.
Yeah, okay. Britt, so number five. Number eight, these are all the threes. I'm going to assume, okay. Number twelve, Patrick Freeman. Number sixteen, Doug Emmons. Number nineteen, Elaine Kiosso. And twenty, Tyson Miller. So we've accepted Rebecca Mabe, and we've excluded Billy Hughes from the list.
And how many votes were casting?
We would be casting three.
How about... I've got the one, sixteen, nineteen, twenty. I've got five, eight.
Okay. How about putting a little star next to it, the three that you...
Let's make it clear by writing third round.
one, two, three, four people with three votes. Tyson Miller, Patrick Freeman, Cherie Westmoreland, and Wayne Britt. So we have eight from the first group. We have... Well, Patrick Freeman is a landscaper, I don't know much more about him. Pardon? I know, but, I mean, it could be, but I don't know who he is, but... All right, what does everybody want to do?
I will say add them to the committee, and let's move on. You know, we're going to vote all night. The last three. The four. Add the last four. We'll have two off in this one.
Yeah, why don't, it, it would certainly expedite things, too. Right now, we have ten, and that includes Doug Emmons. And if we added Tyson Miller, Patrick Freeman, Cherie Westmoreland, and Wayne Britt, that would make a committee of fourteen. What's the pleasure of the board?
Good with that?
And is there another motion that needs to be made because I want to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Jim Nass as the appointee of this group, since Jim received a vote of all acceptance. I'll call Jim Nass.
Sir?
Moved by Michael Fiocca, seconded by Jay Farrell. Is there discussion on this question? Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed?
Could I suggest that you have another resolution to amend the resolution that you just adopted, to change it from twelve to fourteen? That's what your board wants. In that, that you also have a motion to appoint the fourteen people that you gone through this, to this committee.
Right. Make a motion that we amend the resolution to the fourteen members.
Second.
Moved by Michael Fiocca, seconded by John Bonnet. And to name those persons in the resolution, was that part of it?
Separate resolution, I think it would be, sir.
Oh, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Separate resolution, naming the actual appointees?
And to be clear, you should read that, read that list, and lay it there.
For the record.
The appointees would then be James Nass, Susan Levy, Rhonda Mathis, Anthony Davis, Joe Suprick, Kathy Moore, and Eric Braun. Wayne Britt, Cherie Westmoreland, Patrick Freeman, and Tyson Miller.
And Samantha Burchard.
I'm sorry, did I miss Samantha? I did.
And Rebecca Mabe. Do I recall correctly?
She came in on the second...
Second round.
And Anthony Davis. Fourteen, that's four. How many? Do we have fourteen? Okay. Alice has the fourteen.
I second that motion.
Or are you making a motion?
I think I can make a motion. Can I? No.
So moved.
Moved by John Bonnet, seconded by Michael Fiocca. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Is there a motion to adjourn at two minutes after ten?
So moved.
Move to second. Stand if you're approved.
And I would like to thank the mayor for her assistance and guidance through this process, and I would like to thank all of my commissioners for their persistence.
I like the fact you're sitting here.
And I just want to also thank the public for sticking around and bearing witness.
Thanks, Alice.
Yes, thank you, Alice, for your scorkey being.